First is congratulate Jeremy and his wife on their healthy daughter's birth. And the second, yes.
I didn't do any of the work.
Right. The second one might even be more positive. At last week's football game against Neely, there's a gentleman from Neely that I knew, he's a walker, and he talked to me at halftime. He said he appreciated the cleanliness and the handicap accessibility and the smell, positive smell of the bathroom. He said he's been in pig barns that smelled better than some bathrooms at two high schools in City Park. So hats off to the staff for keeping the bathrooms up to this. Okay, with that, number two, approval of minutes from previous meetings on Tuesday, August 10th, regular meeting, Wednesday, August 25th, special meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve minutes from previous meeting.
Second?
Second.
Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Motion carries. Claims and payroll.
I'll make a motion to approve the claim and payroll.
Okay, second?
I'll say I have a motion.
Brian?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number four, reports, manner.
I am here tonight just to answer any questions regarding the budget that is in your packet. Also give you an update that CMS changed guidance today, well, they changed them last Friday. So we are working on getting those informed to our family. I just got them posting to our families tonight that we will be going by appointment only. They now have added another color to us. We're now in orange, which is close to red. So that makes it very scary for the facility. So we're asking families to be patient with us, which today has been a challenge for them, that we will be doing by appointments only. And as the weather changes, that limits our space inside with our activities and everything else going on. So we'll work through those details. Which also brings us to our new business. When we talk about President Biden's order for healthcare workers all to be vaccinated. At this time, we are sixty-eight percent fully vaccinated for my staff, which is a concern if this does go through. As an association and administrator, and I know I sent a letter to city administrator and my board to please write also to CMS and CDC last week, trying to express what this will do to our facility, along with all other healthcare facilities that are doing it, and what jeopardy this could put the Plainview Manor as continuing operation in the future. At this time, we're more pushing, if you don't want to be vaccinated, it's a choice. Then that's how we feel as a board and I feel as an administrator. But then, just testing. And I think my staff are all willing to do that, continue to be testing at this time. But it doesn't sound like our president is pretty much pushing that right now. So as a group of administrators and myself, we're just kind of taking every day by day and see what happens. The next three to four weeks could be our answer of what happens and the outcome of the Plainview Manor to be able to continue as a healthcare provider. So I want you guys to be prepared for that. We did do election of officers, and your president will continue to be Kim Wolken at this time. And with Vicki Peterson being vice president and Jamie Norris being secretary. We did vote on our general liability and work comp, and that was in your handout also. And we got our insurance for nine-one started again. So we're good to go on all that. Any questions for me?
Thank you. Police chief?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Month of August, there was a few more issues we had with certain domestics were up, dog calls were up, thefts were up. The thefts, we did clear probably eight of them right now. So we're still working on a few more. And they're real minor thefts. It's not much over twenty bucks. They're just little thefts. But we're working on that.
Very certain area or time of the day?
Basically, pretty much anywhere in town. They're usually going into vehicles. And they run, they leave the door open. People notice their doors open in the morning, but they're taking basically pocket change.
Yeah, kind of what they did a couple of years.
Yeah, they done that a couple of years ago, but they were taking a lot of phones and stuff like that then. Now they're just taking pocket change. We looked at some young kids. And that's all they're taking is pocket change. And I did have a couple of garages that were not broken too, they just go in them and they leave. But we're getting a handle on that. We have about six, seven kids we're working with right now on that. Dog complaints have been up again. A lot of them are barking dogs. We're kind of getting a lot of the same calls on the same people's dogs. So we're starting to increase their fines from fifty to a hundred dollars on these calls. You have any questions? I can try to answer.
I don't have any more time. Thank you. Economic development?
On the Plainview Fourplex project, so we had that pre-construction meeting last month. And what's happened between then and now is the projected project budget, which was nine-hundred-and-eight-thousand when we applied for this grant a year and a half ago, as of August, and the new bid is one-point-one-five-million. So the project investor is rebidding the project, but he believes the second bid is going to be very similar to the August bid. So we have an issue. On the grant application, the project had the cash flow seventeen percent in year one, and it barely did that at nine-hundred-and-eight-thousand. So we're looking for other options. The Department of Economic Development, we had a meeting with them. They are suggesting that they'd be willing to advance more grant funding. So instead of two of the units being income qualified, all four units would be income qualified. That would inject two-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand dollars per housing unit. But the investor didn't want to do that originally. He wanted those two units free. You can charge a little bit more for rent and trying to see if that would cash flow. So they're working on the formula for that. I did talk to the investor this morning, and he is asking if there's any possibility that the city could use ARP funding for this. I looked at all the ARP guidelines. I couldn't find, there's a number of things you can do for housing, but not new construction housing. Rental assistance, other programs like that, but not this. So there's a little bit of grant money sitting at PCD. I can talk to my board there and see if they're willing to advance some of that to this project. But we're kind of running up against a wall. If the project doesn't cash flow, I'm afraid we'll probably lose our investor. So we've got to figure something out. So that's what we're doing now. On your DTR. We just got an update from Needad on that. And we are looking at round one. The committed fund is two-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand dollars. So that is what all the business owners have applied for. Those are the projects that have been approved. Some of the business owners have backed down or backed out of the project because History Nebraska is involved in that downtown revitalization. And they have some pretty strict guidelines about how you can change the look and feel of your building, especially if it's considered historic. Even if it's not on the Historic Register, they still have that really strict guideline. So there were a few businesses that are either pulled out or are just not doing as large a project as they planned. So we're looking at two-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand dollars in awnings, roofs, signage, windows and doors. I talked to a number of the business owners over the last month. They're having a lot of issues getting materials in. So with windows, we're looking at eight to twelve weeks out. That's going to be indicative of this entire project. I don't think it's going to get any better when we open up round two. Once all of the construction contracts are signed, and we're still waiting on a few business owners, round two will be a hundred-and-seventy-thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars. Business owners will again be available full maximum twenty-five thousand, which is twenty thousand grant funding, five thousand of their own investment. So that's kind of where we are on that project right now. You'll start seeing, I think I drove down and there's already some activities happening. It's just going to take a long time with those material lags. On the Rural Innovation Challenge Grant, the five rural staff, they have completed their assessment of Plainview in Pierce County. The draft maps are done. They are in the process of being uploaded online to that region, riseraregion.com website that we created. They will be meeting with the city staff, Jeremy namely, and whoever he assembles to go over the comp and strat plans. Lowell Schroeder and I will be visiting with the former E-CAP steering committee from 2019. We're going to determine the new priorities and goals for the community. Because all of the priorities that were captured in 2019, we've done them. In the recreation area, in the housing area, you know, getting downtown, the businesses full, getting the cash injections with our revolving loan funds and the grants that we got for that. So those projects are going, the housing projects are going. So we're going to, instead of losing momentum and just kind of waiting, we're going to pull that grip together and see if we can keep going with other projects. LB-840 met last, this, last week actually, to discuss changing the guidelines of the LB-840 Housing Division. I'm not sure if that's on the agenda. Not yet, okay. We'll talk about it next month. We made some changes there. And then Pierce County Economic Development, we recently took the reins of Plainview Pride, which was a nonprofit from Plainview. We are going to call it PCD, Inc., Pierce County Development Incorporated. The nonprofit gives us more flexibility with housing investments, grants and community development. This nonprofit will also serve as a pass-through for the other organizations across the county needing 501(c)(3). For example, here in Plainview, we've started that Plainview Brunswick Community Fund. For example, if the Ballbackers wanted to come to the fund and ask for a grandstand. The community fund can only donate to another nonprofit, and they have to be a 501(c)(3). So we could be the pass-through for those transactions to take place in that sense. So that's pretty much what we've got for you right now. On the Plainview Brunswick Fund, they are moving forward with their Chivers Park project. They have been receiving donations, and we, other than monetary donations, we've also started grain donations at the elevator. That is our short-term project, the tennis court, the basketball court and the pickleball. The long-term project is going to be the community center, which we talked about for several years. There are some grant opportunities, some new ones that have come available. So we're exploring those options. One looks like a pretty good fit, but it takes quite a bit of a match. So we'll see if we can make that work. If we can, you'll hear more about it next month, and we'll pull the trigger on that project. So, questions?
Is the Fourplex increased because of material?
Yes. And even though the lumber prices are coming down, concrete and other prices are going up. So it's almost a wash. So.
And is all the DTR money used up?
No. We have a hundred-and-seventy-thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty-six left. And we'll be opening up round two, and business owners can apply for up to twenty-five thousand of that. Even if they were approved in round one, they can go and get more. Business owners here?
When will that be available, Susan?
Round two?
Two.
As soon as we get the last two stragglers to sign their pre-construction contracts, we can open up round two. We're just waiting on a few business owners that haven't done it yet.
Same one, I think the words.
Yeah, everything's the same. Yep. We have a new community planner at Needad that we're working with, Ryan Dean, she probably will have any contact with. So she's been kind of telling everybody, you need to pay your contractor and then submit the invoice and do those things. We want to let you know that in a perfect world, that's how it would work. But you, if you work with your contractor, have the option of taking that invoice, submitting it to the city, who will submit it to Needad, who will issue the drawdown to go to the state. The council will approve it, goes to the state, state gets a check. The check comes back to the city, the city writes a check to the business owner, and you write the check to the contractor. Now, that's going to take thirty to forty-five days. But that is how we did it in Creighton, that's how the community is doing it, and that's how we're doing it in Pierce. So it's really tough to come up with twenty percent of a, you know, twenty-five-thousand-dollar project. So you can do that, just work with your contractor. If they tell you they want half the materials upfront, that's fine. Have them submit that invoice, submit it to the city. DTR committee can approve it quick, goes to the city council, does the whole circular route, and then you're good to go. So. Any other questions for business owners? We're all here. No? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, city speaker on the phone?
Curbs not here today, I'll meet up, but he was reporting, asking him, asking me, questions we're doing. Only I want to shout out there, as you can see, he's pulling samples out to South Town. That's for our, that's for the new location, so we're working forward and trying to work on it.
Okay. Six forty-five PM, Public Hearing, Nuisance Properties, first one's three oh two South Main. I received a phone call, got a message shortly before five, that he would not be here tonight, but he would be here next month. And I didn't talk to him, I just got the message, and he wanted, the message was, could we wait until next month when he can be here? I didn't actually talk to him, but he.
Yeah, he showed up twice, right?
Right.
I don't think he'll leave.
Your decision, I mean.
It's just a bit forward. Go on, do it. I agree. You're fine?
Yep. So you have a motion, and second by Brian, is that right?
Yes.
Public hearing, you can't do a motion.
Oh, that's right, that's right, no, sorry.
You've got your resolution on later, right?
Yep.
None of these will need to take action because they're down.
Yeah, you're right, you're right.
The other part of the hearing on that one, has there, that, the nuisance resolution, if there's going to be one, calls for cleanup nuisance, unlicensed vehicles.
Right.
Do we have an update? Do we know how many unlicensed vehicles we can prove up? I mean, if you're going to file on him on a criminal matter, we got to prove it.
Just what you can see from the road. Just what you can see from the road. I mean, can't go on his property. There's a camper there.
Well, we'll have to find a way. I mean, we've got to be able to prove they're unlicensed. But if you pass the resolution, recognize that's still an issue.
What if they're inoperable?
What?
How about if they're unlicensed and inoperable?
The resolution says, you know, what you guys had had on the stuff in the past. And I think that's what it said.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
I mean, there may be a lot of other issues, remember, but that's not the nuisance. What you've got for nuisance is this.
Next one's one oh one West Congress, and I just talked to her before I came to the meeting. And she said that she had also talked to Chief Newman, and it does look better. I don't know if anybody else drove by there or not.
Standing right on the back.
Yeah. I think you were looking that great.
Yeah.
Jerry, what do you think about the one oh one West Congress?
Oh, I talked to her twice today, once yesterday. They did some cleaning today. And there was some tin that I thought would blow away again, but I told her, you need to get that strapped down. And they said tomorrow they'll get it all strapped down. But all the vehicles that were unlicensed for the last year and a half or whatever, they're all licensed. There were two or three of them. So that got done. I went up and checked that. So there really isn't nothing there to do.
You have for this particular thing there?
Yeah, they keep tin tied down or whatever, don't blow away, they'll be fine.
That's what I think, with the tin laying out of there by the alley and stuff.
And I, we've talked to her, she'll get that tin moved if we have to, so. But I just told her, keep it strapped down so it don't blow all over.
This here is being unlicensed to be hit with.
They're all licensed now.
Yeah, so.
Last one is one oh four South Elm. The debris was still not load. I could not tell if there was a map or still there.
Yeah, it was still back there.
I couldn't tell through the trees and the grass.
Yeah.
Doesn't look like a whole lot's been done, so.
No, I guess nobody from the public is here to.
They called and said they wouldn't be here.
Make a motion to come out of public hearing.
Okay, second?
I'll say I have a motion.
Okay, Brian?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Aye.
You want to go back to your attorney, or you want me just to finish?
As you will. You can do it either way.
All right, go ahead.
I've got three things, I mean, we've got twenty things on the agenda. The three things have just constituting a report. I'm handing down a letter you've all heard of and know of. Kyle Peterson was working for me.
Right.
He has decided to open an office in Clearwater, along with his office in Tilden. So he presented me with this letter back the first of the month and said, probably going to be cutting back in Plainview, I'm going to spend a day in Clearwater. And that would, that would pull Plainview down to two days a week with his attendance up here. Probably Monday and Wednesday. I don't know quite what to make of that. I brought it up with Jeremy. We'll have to get together, Jeremy, Jerry and I perhaps, and decide if that is even functional for prosecutions or what you might want to have him do for part-time work. We'll, we'll see. But this is just to bring you up to date. There've been no decisions made at my office or on my part. He just presented me with this letter and said, I'm thinking about this. And, you know, I was fearful in the beginning that he's not moving here, and he's not really becoming a part of the community. It's not all that solid. Well, this kind of proves it up. So we'll have to decide how to manage that in the future. And I think Jeremy and Jerry have been satisfied with what he's done so far. And he's been helpful, and he's been on stuff.
Yep.
But if he's not here, at some point, it may not work either. We'll have to be talking about that. That was one thing. My second thing was LB-840. Susan mentioned that. We've gotten a note to me that want to change the format for the sale of the remaining lots up there. We can certainly do that. I've got to clarify with them, talk to them a little more. We'll just change those restrictive covenants. They can be changed. It's the city's deal. And we could make the covenants whatever you want, and sell them on whatever basis you're willing. I'll write up what the LB-840 people have generally laid out for us and have it for the next meeting. So that'll be coming. And then the third thing relates to other matters later in the night, but just as a matter of a report. This morning, Mark Fitzgerald and I, Mark being co-counsel on the dollar store or small box store issues, both received a copy of an email from the Dollar General lawyers in Omaha that they intend to and perhaps have put on record a federal court lawsuit challenging the ordinance. They have not served anyone yet. I take it none of you have seen a sheriff on your door to say, here's a city council member, here's your papers. Depending on how things go, that may still happen. They don't really have an active lawsuit until they've served everyone. You know, I frankly, personally, and perhaps Mark, he can speak for himself, take that to be a bit of a, we can be a bully move and frighten you into submission.
Interesting timing.
But we'll see what comes of it later tonight. The other discussion is further on the agenda. But that's the report part for the moment, anyway.
The email was sent to you directly, or was it addressed to any other council members?
No, it just came to council. It's legal, legal documents. The day they file them, they have to send us a copy if it's electronic. And if they get served, everybody will get them. They're probably public record down at the courthouse, but that remains to be seen. We'll be going into this more in detail. But if we go into it at all in detail, litigation strategy may become an executive session matter. So we'll have to be a bit cautious.
Is that from Dollar General, or is that from the Colby LLC, the one filing that?
I believe the material as we have it is Colby. It is Colby. And we'll have more details as necessary, but the content of litigation and what might become of it is an executive session matter, and it'll partly turn on what else happens tonight.
Thank you. Number six, discussion, action, nuisance property resolutions. Resolution number six-three-five-one-zero-three North Pine Street.
That one, you see that for one, Jamie, with the stuff on the porch, refrigerator in the back.
Six-three-five, in my world, with Mary Ann Dean and her tenant. The tenant was leaving and stuff was going to get cleaned up, but.
She was getting a, attempted evict or whatever.
They're still there.
That's all the appliances in the backyard?
Yes.
Yeah, that was a big thing. Yep. That's really bad. Couple refrigerators, I think. So that's not a good thing.
So what's your point? Do we still need a resolution on that?
Yes, I think so.
To get it done?
Yes.
And just as a matter of full disclosure, if you will, I do work for Mary Ann Dean and her father. And we have other nuisance matters that I've already told you about or related to my secretary. So we may have to push that stuff off to co-counsel in some fashion, anyway. But you can pass the resolutions if you want to. The resolution is drafted. I'll hand you down a conflict.
So if Kyle goes back to not the majority of the time here this in Plainview, can he not have a conflict of interest?
No, that doesn't change the conflict thing. The question would be, if he just no longer stays on my payroll, you know, he's hardly independent, and the city contracts directly with him for some criminal work and this type of stuff.
Oh, so he can go.
Could do that, but then he would not be related to my office. So he would not share in my conflicts.
So it's separate contract.
And we can talk about that, and I think he'd probably do that, and maybe you guys would want to do that. That's complicated, and we got lots of stuff on the book tonight. This resolution just says what the Board of Health business had been previously. Trash junk, miscellaneous junk in the backyard, set a date for completion, but we left a blank.
I think we just get until the end of the month.
Yeah, sounds good. So we have a first by Brian, a second by Bob, to give resolution number six-three-five until September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number seven, discussion, action, nuisance properties. Revisited property at eight oh seven East Park Avenue. I got a message from him this morning. I did get him called back. He, on the Mary's building, he said instead of boarding up the window, he installed a whole new window. He would like to do more, but again, like with the construction costs, it's prohibitive right now. But he said he has cleaned up some more. I don't know, that's my report to you from him, so. But I did notice there was a new window up there, so.
Yeah, I mean, it does look like he's cleaned up more too, I think. Did you go by there, Brian?
Yeah, I'm good by there. He has done some cleanup.
It looks a lot better.
Apart from nuisance on that one, you've got other things out there. The zoning code, for example, says you can have auto repair and storage related to repair, but not general storage of junk or unoperable vehicles. So as I said last month, if you want to proceed with other things, I need to sit down with the board or somebody and go through the checklist of all the various alternatives, and more could be done. Other things could be done. Right now, you're working on your nuisance grant business.
He said all the vehicles are licensed, but one he just bought, and he does not have a clear title to that.
Can I ask you a question? Is that okay? We have LB-two-fifty-six, which is also a tool that we can use for nuisance properties, commercial properties. We believe if you have a commercial building that does not have a viable business in it, or is only being used for storage, after six months, you can go after them, put them on the registry, and believe, fine them per day until they put a viable business in there or list a property for sale. I can think of about three or four buildings that we could do that with. Is there a reason why we're not doing it?
Don't know about it?
No, I don't know about it. Yes, I'm actually working on it. I talked with the attorney, the city administrator from Central City, who's done a great job with it, and I'm working towards that. And we actually brought it up to the health board. You talked about it a couple of months ago, too? Yep, so it's, we are working on it, yeah. But I haven't pulled the trigger on it yet.
Because I do have a couple of business owners downtown that every time they see me, it's the first thing out of their mouth. What about this guy next to me? What about this building? And we've got this tool that we passed over a year and a half ago. We're not using it, so.
Yeah, and recognize that's totally separate from the prosecution for specific items. That's just create pressure with fine, if you get them classified and move on it.
So. Just keep a watch on it, okay? The second one is revisit a, or do you want to vote on that side? Want a motion to vote on it, to keep a watch on it, quickly?
You got to take it off the list, essentially? Take it off the list?
Yeah, off the list. I think he's making a improvement.
Okay, so motion by Brian, second by Bob, and voting Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Motion carries. Revisited property at two oh five North Seventh. I did drive by there today, too. Some of that was cleaned up. And then all of, interestingly enough, the campers and the propane tanks were all moved from the driveways to the empty lot to the north.
Well, that may solve the multifamily thing. I said I would.
Not if they own both lots. It's the same person that owns the same lots.
True. Give me, give me just a second though.
Sorry.
The, you know, a single family residential property being the house has that problem. It is all a continuous property, so maybe there's a multifamily problem. But I see it in the zoning code as R two. So that, if it tricked, if I'm correct about that, is R two in the map. Two families is okay. Is it just two families or is it three?
Who knows?
We don't know.
There's eight vehicles at times.
But the rest of the story is, it is not legal to maintain a residence in a mobile home.
Right.
In an R two district. So that may be approached and remedied if that's part of the problem. You know, the, the zoning for R two very clearly says not mobile homes.
And, and isn't the propane tank illegal too?
Well, that's a propane company question. I don't know.
We dealt with this, we dealt with this a year ago, didn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, with another one that was hooked to a propane tank they're living out of, I believe.
Wasn't the one right down here in King, South King?
Generally, they won't install it around town where the buildings close together and other residences and such, but that we could look at. But the mobile home as a residence is just not a permissible thing. So if you wanna push on that, well, let Jeremy and I know or the police chief and I know and we can turn that up.
Where does those things get started at? Like all the ordinances? We talk about empty housing ordinances, they're not doing this ordinances. Does that start with Jerry? Myself, you, where, where does it all start from?
Well, I can answer that on each individual fact situation. Once we settle on what the fact situation is. I mean, what we've got on this one is a violation of the zoning code for maintaining a residence in a mobile home. That's a violation of the zoning code. Citation could be issued for that and we could write them up or I could just write them up off the cuff. Uh, citation investigated by the police is kind of my preference, cause it gets it off on the right foot and you've got evidence. Uh, but we can talk about that and we just need to have a little meeting, settle on the specific item that needs fixed and get after it. But the facts matter. We gotta sort out what it is that we're gonna fix.
That, that last, last council, we said the cleaning was okay.
So just to clarify, so then if Jerry and I see a zoning issue or ordinance or anything, we come to you, we hash it out and then we move forward to whatever direction we see.
You know, if it looks like it's a violation of whatever code, the zoning code or the city code, you guys make your list of facts, talk to me for five minutes, we'll figure out how to move on it. You know, it's partly a problem with some of these nuisance things is they, they don't cover all the bases. They cover just what they talk about as a nuisance. We can, we can cover the other things. It just takes a little study. Well, I'll make a note of that. You want us to contact them about the trailer house residence and try and do something with it, okay?
But we can let this go because this isn't having to do with
That was just for your nuisance part. It's cleaned up and not
So motion. Motion to let it go and did you second that motion?
Yeah.
Uh, Pam?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number eight, discussion action possible resolutions for nuisance properties. So resolution six thirty-seven is back to two oh five North Seventh. Saying there should be no resolution there, cause we're gonna look at the zoning.
Right, yeah.
Uh, then resolution six thirty-eight one oh one was Congress, that's
That's his.
That's him.
Didn't you conclude that vehicle was gone?
Yeah, they're
Will that one wait to pass on?
So resolution six seven, oh sorry. Resolution six thirty-nine one oh four South Hill. That is one you did wanna ask.
I've got on the resolution Jacob McHugh. Yard mode mattress cleanup general.
Yep.
Here's a draft of that resolution if you wanna look and pick a date.
You guys can change that number too, since you're skipping those other ones.
Oh, sure.
So you can use six thirty-seven as your number, that's not a date.
You'll have to get out your whiteout or something.
That's fine.
We can reprint them, but
Six thirty-six we passed last month for your highway allocation. That way I don't have a gap in the book.
So this becomes what?
Six thirty-seven.
I make a motion to pass resolution six thirty-seven and have it cleaned up by September thirtieth?
Second?
Second.
Okay, Bob? Brian?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries. So the next one will be resolution six thirty-eight, three oh two South Lake.
Now that's another one, recognize you've got unlicensed inoperable in the nuisance category. This is a different property under different rules. This is zoned industrial. So our other options vary a lot and the facts change things. So we'll have to look hard at other options. And your nuisance is unlicensed and inoperable, which is still valid unless something is in a repair shop for a repair. Uh, that you could move on, but again, we have to be able to prove it, which is something of a concern.
So would you say we need to redo it?
Well, if, if we wanna move on the unlicensed and inoperable, you've got, everything is to that point. And you can pass that resolution and we'll do the best we can. But we're gonna have to somehow check the vehicles and figure out what's unlicensed and inoperable.
Well, I'm guessing the ones that are surrounded by junk are inoperable and nuisance, cause you can barely see some of them.
Charlie has satellite pictures he can print out, he said.
Ah.
Right?
Yeah, they don't show what operates or not, though.
Well, no, but I mean, you can tell if they are still there.
Yeah.
I should be able to tell if they're still there, haven't been moved.
Well, same as the other stories, I can hand one down here, but all to just recognize, all we've got on it is the vehicle's unlicensed and inoperable.
That's a good place to start.
So would you be better to try and look for the ordinances and start from a different direction?
Well, you know, industrial has a whole different raft of permitted uses. I just skimmed through it today and there may be some stuff going on there that's not a permitted use, but a lot is. Industrial is the rough and ready area. So a lot of stuff that might be junk along the highway or might be junk in residential, it may be allowable in industrial. So we have to look at that as far as the other prosecutions go. This is a separate matter of the nuisance part we can manage.
Cause that's basically what he's saying is it's a commercial property, so it's all legal.
Well, that's his theory.
Right.
But we still have this for unlicensed and inoperable as a separate issue.
So.
You know, if he convinces a judge that this thing that's sitting here is something that's part of my business and I'm working on it, you know, we might not win that one, but there's some of it that's not.
Yeah. And I think we need to let him know we're serious about it, or sooner, because I don't think he thinks we are.
Yeah.
After I talk to him.
I agree.
I'm gonna make a motion to pass resolution six forty, is that the right?
Six thirty-eight.
Six thirty-eight, three oh two South Main.
I'll sign that motion.
First by Bob, second by Brian?
One by one day.
What day?
Oh, thirtieth.
Thirtieth. Uh, Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number nine, discussion action approval of twenty dash DTR dash zero zero five drawdown, number four, three thousand two hundred forty dollars.
Is it just for administrative services from MEED for your DTR grant?
Motion approve the twenty DTR zero zero five drawdown, number four, three thousand two hundred forty dollars?
Two seconds.
Second? Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number ten, discussion action approval of twenty dash TFRH dash three five zero two three, drawdown number one, three thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars.
Same thing, but this is for the housing project.
Motion approve twenty dash TFRH dash three five zero two three, drawdown number one for three thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars?
Second?
Second? Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number eleven, discussion actions, so that'd be resolution number six three nine then?
Yep.
To purchase the Ford F two fifty four by four pickup in the amount of eighteen thousand five hundred dollars.
And this is the one that was already a thing to talk about we got from
Copy coming down. The number is wrong, recognize.
That's it.
Still agree on it, so you said six three nine?
Yep.
Make a motion to approve number six three nine. Purchase of pickup.
Motion by Tyler, second by Bob, voting Brian?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number twelve, discussion action zoning board recommendations for building permits, first at two zero two East Locust Avenue for a fence.
Board recommended it. There was no issues with any setbacks, so.
Motion to approve the building permit for two oh two East Locust Street for a fence?
Second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Brian, Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is for three zero one West Culture Avenue for the Plainview Public School District for a new six car garage.
And since we have the public overlay, it meets all the criteria, so they recommend it as well.
I make a motion to approve the three oh one West, West Culture Avenue.
Second?
Second?
Okay, Pam?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries. Last one is seven zero seven North Third for a shed.
Needs all the setbacks and just gonna put a shed back there. This is small utility shed, so.
I was just gonna ask one put on the map where it says shed and tree, what's the word in the middle?
Garden.
Garden, okay. Gotcha.
There is no, there is no wall or anything back there, so.
No.
Motion for approval of the building permit on seven oh seven West Third Street?
North Third. Okay, second?
I'll second.
Second, okay. Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number thirteen, discussion action approval of lot split at one zero two and one zero six Northwest Street. And I believe Wim was, Wim's in the back there. If you have any questions? It'd be where Rick Mossel and the two houses north there. Rick owns the lot or the land all the way to the north and Wim and his wife are buying the land the furthest north, so they have a larger backyard. Is that pretty much summing up?
Yeah. Bruce is now laying work behind it and he sees no issues with this, so the board recommended it as well.
Yeah, there's, you know, as I said in my little memo that I sent along, if, if there was a disputed item, it would be a conflict, but I just helped him write it up pretty clean and it shouldn't be a problem with peeling fifty feet off and tie it to the other backyard. You just need to make a motion and get it in the minutes and we'll have a record.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the lot split, uh, one oh two and one oh six Northwest Street.
Okay, second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Brian?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number fourteen, discussion action, ordinance number nine six eight vacate Ellsworth Avenue between lot six of block twenty-nine and lot one of block thirty, College Edition.
I've got a clean copy coming down. Take a look at this one on the way by. When I looked at it this morning, Kyle had done this. And I waved it by when it went down to Courtney. And that was fine at the moment, but get, get one in everybody's hands. I, I changed one line on this final draft. I'll show you what it was.
For those who doesn't know, that's the, that's the street north of Kate Alexander's new house. So it's not really a street, but it's the property there.
Right, there's a space there.
Yep.
And because it reverts to the adjoining property owners, Kyle had written up the lead in to the ordinance as the place, the space between this lot and that lot. The lot on the north and the lot on the south. I've never done that. We've never done it that way in Plainview before. We've always said we're vacating a street from this point on the street to this point on the street. Not that part of it that lies between two other chunks of property. So I just changed the top paragraph. Vacate Ellsworth from the east side of Fifth Street to the west side of the alley in blocks twenty-nine and thirty. It does the same thing. It lines up with Hodgson's lot and the neighbor's lot. It just refers to the street as the street from here to here, which I think is the better plan. Uh, the one thing that's a little odd about that is you're vacating half a block. So there's another block and a half of Ellsworth out there in the grass that crosses Sixth Street. But I guess there's no harm in it. There's just, you're leaving in place, the public right away have a little stub out there. I'd almost be inclined to do a whole block at a time, but then you've got other property owners and here you know Hodgson and Anderson or
A man or
Want to do it. The one other thing that I don't think Kyle looked forward in the code book to the, one other section that talks about vacating streets, says there should be certified mail notice to the adjoining property owners. I don't think that happened. I talked to Rich Hodgson today. He said, no, I didn't get any certified mail. So I told him, I'll, if we, if you pass this, I'm just gonna prepare a waiver of notice and a consent and have he and Anderson sign it and we're fine. And we'll just file that along with the ordinance instead of proof that they got a certified mail. So if you're okay with it, you just vacate this chunk of Ellsworth and Hodgson's would own half of that street and Anderson the other half.
Alexander.
What?
Alexander.
Yeah, yes.
Did they give a reason or they just didn't want it paved or built if it was?
Uh, I believe they're gonna purchase everything, so they'll make it all one continuous property.
Gotcha.
Looks like you'd already planted grass on it. I had to see it. I drove up there today. I was hoping you were gonna do this.
Yeah. Any further discussion? Action. Anybody first? First to? Yeah, first and second to vote?
Motion to pass ordinance nine sixty-eight to vacate Ellsworth Avenue between lot six of block twenty-nine and lot one of block thirty, College Edition.
I'll second that motion.
Second? Okay, Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Motion passes three to one on first reading?
Make a motion, play the second, third reading?
Okay.
Second?
Second. Okay, any further discussion? Brian?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Motion passes on second and third readings. Number fifteen, discussion action ordinance number nine six six, regulations for keeping and maintaining chickens and corporate limits.
There had been discussion of a special use permit requirement.
Yeah.
I mean, you had a permit requirement, which is not quite the same as a special use permit requirement. So, it came back around. Kyle was gone when Courtney let me know about that. He hasn't been back in town since. So I went ahead and modified the ordinance. And we have a draft coming down. It seems a bit of overkill to me to have it be a full grade special use permit. But we've got a special use permit set of requirements in the zoning code, so it wouldn't be a done deal. Anybody that wants to do it would apply for a special use permit and it would give the neighbors a chance to have input and things like that. So where that appears now is is right under the type line six two oh eight. You can keep chickens if you comply with this section and you have received a special use permit issued pursuant to this section and including the special use permit requirements, I mean, they're separately in the zoning code. And I take it you still wanna keep the terms of the ordinance, the stuff you had come up with earlier. If I'm wrong about that, you'll have to let me know, but that's the way I understood it.
And it's supposed to be fifty feet from the neighbor's house, it's twenty-five feet on your own property.
Yeah.
Number three needs to be twenty-five feet on your own property, fifty feet total from the neighbor's house.
Closer than fifty feet to a neighboring residence. And then number four is coops or runs closer than ten feet to the property line, so that should be twenty-five feet?
Yes.
That's the line we would pick?
Yep.
Line four then could be twenty-five feet?
Yes.
All right, well, that's an easy reprint, if you wanna treat that as understood and pass it tonight, I can clean it up for Courtney tomorrow.
And that brings me to the question of people that already have chickens now, about twenty-five feet from my neighbor's lot long. What does that leave me?
Well, you're back to, to the issue of grandfather rights, if you will.
Yeah.
We've not tried to make anybody that had chicken prior to the ordinance to get rid of them.
Just wanna make that clear though.
As long as you, you know, you can go out and take your picture tomorrow and prove this was here before the ordinance was passed and that probably solves that.
Ten foot, three inches.
Yeah.
But, I mean, I'm just, that's what I wanna clear up though.
Right. I think that would exempt you from any criticism or prosecution over the twenty-five foot thing, but we have to keep a record of the timing.
And then another thing that we talked about at the meeting, um, I do not like the, um, let's see if it's still in here, of ten permits and applying on a first come, first served basis because that.
We took that out.
Yeah, is it not in this new one? It's in the one we got in the packet.
It's in this one.
And where is that? The second page on.
Letter I.
See, and we, we talked about that, we, I mean, in doubt seriously if there'll be ten people that want chickens, but you never know, and if you do, and you have a first come, first served, and somebody can't get there and they have thousands of dollars invested in their pan and chickens and feed, it wouldn't be fair to them to say, oh, sorry.
Your number eleven.
Yep, your number eleven.
Well, like I said, all we did was. Copy book was still there, we, we never got together and had a meeting on it, you wanna just strike that sentence?
I personally.
Yeah.
No.
You're gonna pass it?
Yeah, I would vote for it, put that in there.
So far, if somebody makes a motion, we just note that.
Letter I.
The set, the setback is changed to twenty-five feet and B and I strike the last sentence. I mean, as long as we can make it very clear, we can still reprint.
So just to clarify on letter I, all you're taking out is that last line where it says, only ten permits, okay? Still April or March, May thirty first and April first is as soon as you can.
Yeah. Need a motion on it, you said?
Yes.
Bob, I know, I know we talked to you and I talked to you guys, that we kinda stated that you should have an exact number of chickens you're gonna keep, not a minimum maximum, because you shouldn't apply for two and then three weeks later you end up with eight chickens in your backyard, so.
That's not in here.
It still says minimum and maximum on your, on letter F, number three, I thought we talked about.
Well, we need to have something in there saying that they can't have more than that, no matter what, so they can't come in and say, we want sixteen chickens.
Right, but, I mean, you know, someone saying, I'm applying for, if you're applying, you should list, list how many chickens you're applying for.
On the special use permit, I thought we talked about that.
But then later on they come back and you look and they have eight chickens, well, they only applied for two on their permit.
Right.
Yeah.
So I thought we were gonna take that out, they had to put an exact number that they were gonna.
Where are you, where are you Courtney?
Letter F.
On page two.
On the top of page two, um, item number three.
And that would make sense, because that's gonna affect the size of your.
Your coop's gonna be affected by how many chickens you apply for.
So we should ask for a certain number, is that what you're saying?
But it can't be more than.
Right, it can't be more than eight, but, I mean, don't apply for two and then all of a sudden you have eight chickens and you did build a coop for eight chickens.
Yeah.
Are you really gonna hold somebody to how many chickens they can have between three and four? Are we gonna prosecute them if they go to four?
Your coop regulations are based on how many chickens you have.
The size.
The size of your coop and your run are based on how many chickens you keep. So you wanna build it based on how many chickens you're planning on keeping. I'm just trying to.
So you're thinking.
In the future.
If they change, they gotta apply for a new permit.
I mean, apply for eight chickens, if you only get six, you're not violating, you're not violating.
Have to have your coop big enough to hold the maximum you're applying for.
Right.
Right.
That's kinda self-explanatory, isn't it?
Um, well.
Sure.
It is, it is.
I mean, if you say you want it up to eight, then your coop better be big enough for eight.
I think she's saying she's worried about somebody coming in saying, I have two chickens, they build, um, a minimum of one square foot per, per bird, so they have a two square foot building. And then all of a sudden, somebody calls in and said, oh my gosh, you have eight birds in a two square foot building.
No, can't do that, against the law.
Well, you just said you wouldn't prosecute over just that many chickens.
It's gotta be, it's gotta be big enough for the number of chickens you're keeping.
That's what she, that's what she.
That's what I'm saying, they need to put the, the number they're applying for on their permit.
Yes, they need to put the number they're applying for on the permit.
Yeah.
Yes.
I think the size per count solves that, but whatever you wanna do, I don't care.
That's what we want to do.
So change it to the number of chickens intended to be kept or something like that.
Between two and eight.
Okay. Well, is this getting complicated, you wanna reprint or?
Well.
You wanna keep trying to line item?
Whatever we gotta do, we just wanna get.
So the number of chickens, which must be between two and eight.
Not a specific number.
Yeah. So not less than two or more than eight. All right, do you wanna still try and pass it, or you want me to reprint clean?
You gotta tape measure for your total.
Again, a fairly clear change.
Yeah.
I think I'm clear as far as reprinting.
So a motion for ordinance number nine six six.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance nine sixty-six, regulations for keeping and maintaining chickens and corporate.
I'll second that motion.
With the three changes that have been discussed.
Oh yeah, with the three changes, three changes that have been discussed.
Brian.
Hi.
Bob.
Hi.
Tyler.
A.
Pam.
Hi.
Motion passes three to one on the first reading.
Make a motion to suspend the second and third readings.
I'll second that motion.
Second, okay, Tyler.
Name.
Pam.
Hi.
Bob.
Hi.
Brian.
Hi.
Motion passes three to one on second and third reading. Number sixteen, discussion action, appointment of Nebraska Cooperative Government Annual Meeting Representative.
This is the one you sent the email about?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I can, I'll represent.
I appreciate that.
Can I ask a question, what exactly do they do?
It's the power company.
Just in case.
This is for, this is our keynote.
Keynote.
Oh, okay.
So this is just representative for our town on our, on the cooperative government keynote.
Gotcha, I was just wondering.
Or basically, yep.
So I have, um, a motion, or, sorry, I would like to appoint Tyler with his agreement for that, so, with your council's approval.
Thanks for volunteering, Dave.
We just need a motion, a second.
Motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Tyler as the representative for the Nebraska Cooperative Government Annual E.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Bob.
Hi.
Brian.
Hi.
Pam.
Hi.
Tyler.
Hi.
Motion carries. Number seventeen, discussion action approval of employee wages fiscal year twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two.
All right, well, these are ones that we just passed yesterday, I've talked about them for the last couple meetings, uh, total increase three point seven percent.
I'll make a motion to approve the employee wages for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two year.
I'll second.
Pam.
Name.
Bob.
Hi.
Brian.
Name.
Tyler.
Hi.
Myself, I, motion passes three to two. Number eighteen, discussion approval for, uh, yeah, approval for possible expansion of the clown doll museum.
And this one isn't this green?
It is.
I know that's why the room is all packed and everybody's here to.
I'm sure it is. I mean, have you been to Clown Doll Museum? Good for you, you know what I'm talking about. Okay, so tonight, I've already given a packet to Courtney for my annual, um, report for the Clown Doll Museum. The current count for the twenty twenty-one tourist season is three hundred and seventy-two visitors, and this is just the visitors that signed the guestbook. We've had some that just come and look and just take a picture and come in and quickly remove themselves when they don't like clowns. This year, we had people from North Carolina, Wisconsin, Colorado, Minnesota, Washington DC, Iowa, California, Kansas, Massachusetts, Oklahoma, Vermont, New Hampshire, Virginia, Missouri, South Dakota, Ohio, Texas, Georgia, Indiana, Pennsylvania, North Dakota, Washington, Oregon, Illinois, Arizona, Nevada, New York, Maryland, and the foreign countries of Norway, you're, the Ukraine and Africa, thirty-seven Nebraska towns, and these guys.
What do we need here to say which states they did not show up?
I should've counted, but I didn't, sorry about that.
It's about everyone.
But it is amazing how many from, I mean, you think we're out here in the middle of nowhere and all these people found us, so it's really good. Our wish is tonight, ours to, to incorporate more information about the Clown Doll Museum on City of Plainview website, we'd like to do that. At the volunteer luncheon on September ninth, we did talk about possibly purchasing this building. Um, years ago, uh, Lee Warneke was in charge and they bought this building for one dollar from the city, I did offer two, but the council did not, the volunteers that we had decided that they didn't wanna take the risk of the cost of insurance coverage and they worried about that snow removal, even though our city always does a real good job of that. So in the meantime, we're gonna continue to do some fundraising for an expansion, we are over eight thousand dollar, eight thousand articles right now. We have more coming monthly, if you walk in the entrance, you'll see all the boxes that are not unpacked yet. Tonight, we're asking for your permission for the expansion, since the bought, the building and contents are owned by the City of Plainview. So for more information to decide, we have surveyed the east lot, that was done on Friday, September third. The, the land was bought and donated to the clown, well, to the city who lets us have it, and that was from Jim Kraus. And if you approve the expre- expansion, then we will file a building permit for a sixteen foot by forty foot premier building from O'Neil. A base price of seventeen thousand seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. The upgrades would be added, like insulating the floor and the walls and doing the electrical, there would be no sewer or water needed 'cause we already have a bathroom, which is now being remodeled. We have new letters ordered and, uh, for the building, if you let us have it. The connecting point would be on the east door, the present back door to the two thousand seven edition, which is, which goes east and west of the building. And the future plans, we hope to put a portico that's between the two buildings to make it a little bit more aesthetic and more inviting, like a courtyard area, but that's down the road. We would like to use the alley as parking, because now you have to negotiate going off of highway and you know that that hill is up there, you can look and the next thing you know, you come back and then here's a car right here. So we thought that would be maybe a little bit better to have that, there is a sidewalk along the highway, so we don't think we'd have to put in another sidewalk. Well, our thirteen volunteers not only help man the Clown Doll Museum, they also promote business, when they say, what else is there in Plainview? They're always good about pointing out other businesses and other places to visit in Plainview. I think that the expansion is a good draw, it's right on Highway twenty. We also in the packet have a list of about ten different community service opportunities that our Plainview High School kids could do for us. We do appreciate the city paying for the utilities, the water we use is at a minimum and we take care of the garbage and ourselves, electricity is paid by them, but we try to keep it as minimally as possible and if not, Courtney reminds us. We are going to put new LED lights in, mainly because the T twelve's are no longer made, so we hope that will take care of using more, uh, efficient, uh, use of our lights. And we'll have Mike McManaman do that, heating, cooling could be more efficient, but that's down the road also. The estimated increase in cost to the city would be about a hundred dollars a year. So now you say, good. You can have it. Any questions?
Sounds, sounds like a great idea.
If any of you wanna come down, we have a key, just call and we'll let you in. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So something didn't actually say action.
You can wait, she's gonna do a building permit, but she just wanted to present to you that you're okay with it, so.
So, yeah, she come, and I asked her that we should come to council, make sure that everyone's okay, if we didn't waste your time.
Head now? Good, okay, proceed, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I skip ahead real quick, number twenty, mayor appointment, LB eight forty board, CDA board and DTR committee. Um, Bob Baird has resigned and Bill Michael has agreed to fill his unused, of course, or unused term.
Is Bill here? Um, yeah, we've had to fill this position for a little while and the LB eight forty board is a great board, they have a great dynamic and so I, you know, asked them if they would look amongst themselves to see if they could fill that position and they threw out some names and Kevin Legateltor, I talked to Bill Michael and, you know, obviously he's a long time business owner in Plainview, entrepreneur, um, you know, as we work with revolving loan funds for entrepreneurship and startup and expansion, uh, he just has a lot to bring to the table, so, um, that is who the board would like to have join the committees. And again, they serve three committees, but, uh, they do a great job.
Need a motion in a second, so we can vote.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, second.
I'll second.
Brian got the second.
Brian.
Brian.
Hi.
Bob.
Hi.
Pam.
Hi.
Tyler.
Hi.
Motion carries. Number nineteen, discussion action, small box discount store topics added nine nine twenty twenty-one. Letter A, executive session to discuss litigation risk and potential outcomes relative to challenges to small box store ordinance.
Brian, for what it's worth, you know, you can take these items in any order that you choose and you can certainly take public comments, you have a lot of people here that perhaps wanna talk. Uh, we, we have the additional development of the apparently serious threat of litigation, that's the way we would leave it until we go into more details. And I think they did what they did to just make it more obvious that they're serious, but, uh, whether they would succeed with that and, and whether they would carry through with it into the future remains to be seen, but they certainly are making the show that they intend to. But you need to decide, uh, what order you're gonna deal with things or, or if you wanna do executive session first and understand those factors. We certainly can, although that rather inconveniences the.
Children's library, or the children's library part open if you go over there, or is the library still open till you just?
It's open.
Open till you.
Yeah, I need to make sure everybody takes a podium and.
Right.
Maybe, I don't know, it may be a good idea to bring people up to speed quick, like what the ordinance was for when it was passed in March, and then there was an executive session, I think, either March or April, where we discussed whether you would pursue what would happen if litigation was pursued and you guys voted to, I don't know if you talked about.
Well, yeah, those are all valid points that Susan makes, I mean, this has been visited once, but this more recent threat brought it to a head in the sense that, you know, you can stick your head in the sand. brought it to a head in the sense that, you know, you can stick your head in the sand, but something is going to happen anyway. So Mark and I had talked and we had negotiated a bit with the council in Omaha on the issue of, well, if conversation is possible, perhaps we should have conversations before lawsuits. And that's where the agenda items arose. I mean, if we just said, go fly, according to him, he was going to file this two weeks ago, and then we'd be talking about the lawsuit and what to do. So we're going to be talking about it one way or another. We attempted to put it off by telling him it would be on the agenda. It didn't totally put off. But we're going to be talking about it one way or the other. So I think you need to have that conversation. And as I said, we can do an additional executive session if you wish.
So a public comment, I'll ask that you come to the podium, introduce yourself, and limit your remarks to a maximum of three minutes.
Are we open?
Yep.
I'll go first. Okay, my name is Paula Hoffman. I'll talk fast. Um, I just want to ask a couple of questions about having two big box stores here. Competition is always good, and you ask any of these business owners, they're competing with everybody around them. They're competing with the town that's thirty minutes away and they're also competing with the people that are ten and fifteen minutes away. We have a box store in our town. We are supporting that, a grocery store, pharmacy, and all the other businesses, right? And they still are competing with these other communities. So yes, competition is good, but they are competing on a daily basis for what they have right now. So we bring another big box store into here, somebody's going to fold. What's going to happen to that empty building? What's going to happen to the people that have supported our community always? I have not seen one of these big box stores at the, um, foundation golf tournament. I haven't seen these big box stores providing food for every function, um, through school, church, whatever organization. You don't see those big box stores doing that. Yep, you can go online and you can ask for a donation. They might, and they limit you to the multiple amount that they can give you. The people that are here day after day after day, they don't do that. They keep giving and giving and giving. So that is my big thing. I want you to ask, what is this big box store going to do for the rest of the community? What are they giving back to us? And then one of these buildings, maybe both of these buildings are eventually going to leave. Then what? We have an ice store, right? We have another empty building. We're struggling to get businesses to come to this town anyway. And then we have businesses that are gone. Just close up shop. They don't care what their building looks like. They leave. They have a big corporation that pays their taxes. They don't care that there's weeds growing up. It's dilapidated. They don't care. Because they have not invested in our community. They just came and they used our community. Um, so that's really what I want you to think about. What is this going to do for our future? Yep, for a short time. For a short time, we might have some new, amazing new idea or item, just like when you're kids and you want the latest and greatest thing. It breaks quickly. So stay with what's true and sound and has always been here for you. Thank you.
Next?
I'm Sharon Hanson. I live at seven oh eight West Park, which is directly, would be the house directly across the street. I have three kids and dogs and all kinds of things, and there is houses all the way around that area. So yes, that lot might be zoned for commercial use, but everybody around us, there's not a bit, there's not a business. So you're going to have all that traffic in and out of the highway. The houses that are there already deal with all the highway traffic. So now you're going to add more traffic in that area that's residential with little kids, you know, all that stuff. I just, I don't want that in my neighborhood. And I don't want to look at it when I sit on my front porch. Because literally when I sit there, that's what I'm going to look at. And I don't want to look at that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Next?
It's a race.
You have a line if you need.
There we go. That works. Um, I'm Ashley Denninger. I'm the owner of the pharmacy here in town. Um, I just want to resonate, um, what Paula already said. Um, like she said, we're already competing. And I agree, competition is good. There's nothing wrong with that whatsoever. I don't, I would like to believe that bringing another big box store wouldn't necessarily put me out of business. It would eliminate my employees and that is a big thing to me. Um, I've taken a lot of pride in employing five people from this area. Um, I come from a community that has a Dollar General already. And I can tell you for a fact that I rarely see one of our local community members working in that store. They bring in, they are a corporate situation. They bring in their own employees. So if you think that this is an employment opportunity for people here, I would not say that you should count on that. With that being said, I mean, please seriously consider what, what benefit this is going to bring. We have one big box store already. What is another one going to bring? What, what extra thing does it have to offer? And if there is something that you think they can bring, come and talk to me. Maybe I can get that fancy new toy that you're looking for. So, um, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Nikki Peterson, just one quick comment. If this dollar store wanted to come in so bad, where were they five years ago? I mean, why didn't they come in a long time ago instead of all of a sudden wanting to come in when we already have one? It makes no sense. So that'd be my question. Where were they when we were looking for a store at that time?
Thank you.
I'm Jan Raggy and I've got the grocery store downtown Mitch's Food Center. And I guess my question is, what is a logical reason to bring in another dollar store in Plainview? We've got a Family Dollar. We hire a lot of teenage kids, high school children. Does a Dollar Store, do the Family Dollar, do they hire any teenagers? No. And I look like Ashley and Paula, the same, same scenario, okay? Um, we may have to lose, we'll lose some employees. Do people like to lose? Do they not like to make money? That's why you're, we're in business. We took a hit when the Family Dollar came to town. We had to cut hours and some of our employees. And that's going to happen again with the Dollar General. So I just hope our city council, our mayor will back us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wanda Retzloff, just, uh, resident here. Um, I went to a support group this morning in Norfolk. They said, what's new in Plainview? Said, well, going to be a big meeting tonight about the Dollar General wanting to come in. And these people are all from Norfolk, but they agreed that you already have Family Dollar. You do not need another one. If you want to go to Dollar General, you've got Creighton, you've got Pierce, you've got Neely, you've got Bloomfield, all within about twenty-five miles of right here. And I've been in both. You can buy the same dollar thing there that you can buy over here. So what are you gaining? Except for it could put one of our stores out of business. So that's, that, I mean, these are Norfolk people that think we really don't need another one. So why, why can't we just stay with what we've got and try to get something in that we really need?
Thank you.
I guess I'm going to kind of be a repeat, but I just don't understand why we can't bring in like a true value. There is no place in town where we can buy any small repair type stuff, bolts, nuts, all that crap. But what I don't understand is, is, am I incorrect, but isn't Family Dollar also splitting into a Dollar Tree? So I've put three dollar stores in this town. We don't need it. I am full support of Mitch's and I just think that you should think about what's already here and support your community.
You can go, or I can. Do you want me to?
I own Serendipity downtown.
I'll give up my three minutes.
Yeah.
I own Serendipity downtown. Half of my food budget is with Mitch's. I think you're right, right, Ben? I very much appreciate being able to go one block when I run out of milk or I didn't order enough bread. If we get the dollars, that general, what's the name of it? Dollar General. We have so many dollars around here, don't know where they're coming or going. So what are they going to offer us? Is it a lot of canned goods? Is it a lot of, um, do they have material? Do they have knickknacks? Do they have stuff for crafts? I don't know. You don't get taxes on food, so how much tax money, how much revenue are we going to get from this? We had to turn down side dumper out there because they were going to overload our sewer. I don't know if that happens with the Dollar Store, but there's, people are going to be using the toilet, I betcha. So I just wonder what that's going to do.
Thank you. Well, as I want to do, I have some information for you that I printed out. Some of it is part of what I'm going to talk about. I'll give you just a few minutes. You don't have to look at it now either if you want. You can take that time and tell you what. So I already crossed off three or four paragraphs from what other people had. I had this nice opener that I was going to use. It was kind of fun, but uh, here we are having a discussion that I thought we'd all convinced you of months ago. I realize there's been some changes in what's going on. I came to an understanding of today. That's why I cut out this paragraph about why this is coming up again, so that's all really great. As to the previous information that you've already had, where you made a decision about this like six months ago or something, uh, I don't think any of those things have changed. The food desert creation and manipulation of a dollar store profiting off of it in our community is a concern, especially with current businesses that provide those goods and services in a competing fashion. Frozen food, junk food, candy, soda, all have a degrading factor on your community, especially when they're cheap. But either through health or a drain of wealth, um, erode your community from the underside. These stores historically don't pay well. Family Dollar, on a national average, cashiers paid eight dollars and fifty-one cents an hour from Indeed.com. With five hundred and fifty-two stores surveyed, managers range from eleven dollars to twenty-two dollars an hour with an average of fifteen dollars an hour. That's thirty thousand a year for those of you that don't want to do it on your phone. Eighteen thousand dollars below the Nebraska poverty level for a family of four. Dollar General can pay anywhere from eight dollars to twelve dollars for an assistant manager and their cashier price is somewhere in the middle there as well. I will have you know, I, so I get the distinct pleasure of not only having like actual conversations, but also having to put up with all the people on social media at the same time. So I'm going to deliver some of those fun facts to you as well. There was an allegation made that the local businesses don't pay as much as a dollar store would pay. Uh, I start my people with no degree, no experience, no nothing at two or three dollars higher than a dollar store will start you. So I don't know what everybody else pays. We have technical people over there. We have people that have to be organized and pay attention and show up to work here. We have all those kinds of things. It's not a paying proposition. They don't employ young people. They only have a cap on the number of employees they can have. Uh, a little later, I'll come back to that. Uh, these are still, these stores are still not competition. Like we talked about last time, they're not competitive businesses to what Plainview currently has. Uh, basic understanding of cost of goods, inventory management, and renewal of product can show you that. They will still damage our local businesses by around thirty percent of their annual sales and I don't know about all the everybody else in here, but if you took a thirty percent pay cut, you'd probably be pretty irritated. They still don't employ young people. They still don't participate in your community. They still don't add appreciative to your sales tax. And they still don't pick up their boxes from the aisles after the truck arrives. If you'd like some more, I double dog dare you to Google, Google store disadvantages, which has six, seven point six billion results versus Dollar Store's advantages with thirty-two million results mainly, mainly referencing the Dollar Store website itself. So in fact, uh, not as a direct sole impact, of course, Plainview's net taxable sales, this is my favorite part, has dropped nearly two million dollars since Family Dollar arrived in twenty twelve. Again, that's not totally their fault, but the store certainly isn't propping up our retail community. Since, uh, Nebraska's sales tax, our taxable sales, our net taxable sales would have had to gone down close to four million to only fall two million with their sales totals. You know what that tells me? They've killed businesses that would have provided sales tax and added back something that doesn't have a value. So before you start talking about other towns, keep in mind, Plainview is an odd commodity, not community commodity. I meant that. It's funny. We have less net taxable sales by half than any other community around us and we have for nigh on thirty years. Neely has twenty-three million, Creighton has seventeen, Osmond has fourteen, Pierce has fifteen. And Plainview back to nineteen ninety-nine has never had over nine million dollars in net taxable sales in the history of me being paying attention, okay? Uh, even in the greatest days ever, we either have a lot of liars in our town that have never been caught when they go to pay their sales tax, or we're a town that doesn't need retail to survive, though we seem to seem to doggedly pursue it with no end. We're a community that's supported by an agricultural industry and that industry doesn't pay a lot of sales tax because they're manufacturers, not end users. So to that end, I see comments all the time about bringing more business to town with the addition of another dollar store. Why would anyone from, and some of these already been mentioned, Creighton, Bloomfield, Neely, Pierce, Norfolk, Nanton, Atkinson, O'Neil, Wakefield, or Laurel visit our community to buy exactly the same thing that they have in their own town? There's some other play here. So after all that, where does the money of our current, where does the money go? So where does the money of our current local grocery store profit go? It goes to Jan Raggy, Shaw Raggy, their family, and their kids. You know where the money for our current pharmacy profit goes? It goes to Ashley and Forrest and their kids. You know where all the money from the profit of the office supplies that I don't want to get to sell because they've been squeezed out on three different sites? It goes to Brooke, Abel, Curtis, Marlena, Bash, and Barrett and Eliana. I saw talk over the previous years, and I've been here for seventeen in business, watching, reporting, studying, learning, seeing what comes and goes, what starts and stops. The people that I hang around with downtown have been here for way more years than that. We've lost a lot, but it doesn't mean we're valueless. I've heard some rumblings that the Dollar Store entrepreneurs would like to sue us. And now I've heard that maybe they've chosen to do more than that. They didn't want to just do it. Maybe they have. So let me advise you that you're not alone in this fight, which is part of the materials that I provided for you tonight. Kansas City, that'll become important later, Tulsa, Mesquite, that's in Texas, Oklahoma City, New Orleans, and Birmingham all have similar ordinances and when, if true, the Dollar Store people are done attempting to scare us into doing something, they can go there and sue those people as well, which they won't. Seen a survey on social media, perhaps the mayor will cover that. It was his survey. Did anyone ask Rick and Marla Mosel, entrepreneurs and business owners, Ray Door, Bob Green, John Steinkrauss, Ron Swanbeck, Dave Hamilton, and all the people on the south side of Highway twenty what their thoughts are? Just because it's not a zoning change doesn't mean they want it in their backyard or front yard as it is. So let's talk a little bit about history. I promise I'm about done. Let's consider our local Family Dollar. Originally, it was owned by Cole FD Portfolio XI, that's eleven, in two thousand and twelve. And Family Dollar as a whole was bought out by Dollar Tree in two thousand and fourteen. The building was sold in two thousand and nineteen for one point one seven two million dollars to MDC Coast Two LLC. Do you know how many owners that company has in other states? The owners being the Realty Income Corporation, four hundred and eighty-two nationwide. Four hundred and eighty-two other shell corporations with that name creating, buying, selling, and profiting off of low-income areas like us. The history of perhaps the Dollar General store. What's the newest store any of you can think of that Dollar General came into? Where do you know what it, where do you know where it is?
Norfolk.
Norfolk. It's owned by Elk Creek Capital of Overland Park, Kansas. This is why the Kansas City information is important. Plainview's proposed would be owned by Colby Capital, also of Overland Park, Kansas. Both, as you can see on the back of your packet sheet there, are owned or have ties to a man called Tyler Oliver. He's a registered agent for Elk Creek and he's a contact for Colby Capital on their website as the owner. Tyler Oliver boasts that he has developed over two hundred such Dollar General stores, being their preferred developer in Kansas, Nebraska, South Dakota, and expanding into North Dakota. Colby Capital currently has Dollar General stores in their entirety listed on their website for sale. This is not a business. This is not a retail opportunity. This is not a local person coming into competition. This is an investment group. It's not about, it's all about making money and that's fine. There's nothing wrong with that. I don't think we need that in our community. So where does that Dollar Store money go? Colby Capital and Elk Creek Capital, real local names, right? Family Dollar Dollar Tree stock closed at eighty-eight dollars a share today, and in the past four years, it hasn't done much to talk about. It usually hovers around a ninety-dollar share. Dollar General closed around two fifteen a share today. In the past four years, it's gone up from seventy-two dollars a share to two hundred and fifteen dollars a share. So where does the money go that we all spend there or we want to spend there, or we think we want to spend there? It doesn't go here. It goes to their investors. Do we all own a lot of that stock? Do you think we own Dollar General stock? Hopefully you got it at the seventy-two price point, right, instead of two fifteen? Can anyone, and maybe some of you can, and this is meant to be a little bit facetious, can anyone name you the people that work at the Dollar Store? Perhaps Barb is included over here. First and last, and where their children go to school. Can they name me the people that own the store? Can they sponsor a chamber membership, pay a local school lunch, all the things that all these other people have said, you get to get out of that paragraph. Did any of them appear today to express how important this was to them, like all of the business people and local people in our community? Now, they use their profits to send attorneys or send threats. How very fun and direct. Now, they use their profits to send attorneys or send threats, how very fun and direct. So to finish this conversation, stop bringing this up. Turn our efforts towards some actual improvement of our community. Let the people who are actually involved in the growth of the town, commerce and business, give you some advice, and stop trying to kill the thing you constantly whine about wanting. Real beneficial local businesses in Plainview. You don't believe your economic developer when she says it, you don't believe the locals that own the businesses that are around, you won't believe the hundreds of years of commercial business experience in the room, you don't believe the studies that we give you, the testimonies and information provided to you from across the United States. So how about this? There are four hundred households in this community, and even at two hundred dollars a month in grocery bills, that's eighty thousand dollars a month in revenue just from our local people. I don't believe for a second that any of you wanna shop at a second Dollar Store, or that you buy all your groceries there, or even that you would prefer to do so. These businesses come to places where they think no one has the mobility or the choice to choose better, and sell you the cheapest garbage they think they can get away with. There is value here, there is money here, there is economy base right here, so please stop trying to ruin it. We fill the hole of retail in our community with one. And the funny part about that is, twenty years ago when this came up, and the older people in the town were trying to decide whether we wanted a Dollar Store or not, everyone was absolutely one hundred percent no way. And then we went about fifteen years with not a lot of retail going on, and all of a sudden it became okay, and we really wanted one. So this isn't a question of competition, of retail versus service of products in our community, but of value to our community. Do things that add value, not to steal it away from investors playing a real estate game with our livelihoods. We've already seen how this investment scheme works out without estate land buyers doing it to corporate farms to our agricultural land in Nebraska. We realized that one a decade late, but now we should know better. Have any questions for me about any information I gave you?
You can keep going, everyone.
I got three more. What else you got? With, I wasn't here for the portion of the meeting where something was announced. Can someone give me a Cliff Notes version of what's going on, so I don't have to go back and watch the video? What has been announced about this nonsense going on? Sure. Might or have?
There's an email sent to, and you probably should be the one speaking.
There is an electronic filing in the United States District Court for the District of Nebraska. Colby Twenty Twenty-One LLC. That's the current version of what was developed here. The city of Plainview, and naming the officials because they probably have to.
Is that a different LLC than the one that put in for the, the building?
Don't know.
Yeah, that would be as legal.
Have you heard of Colby Twenty Twenty-One LLC? Did they apply for any permits?
Isn't that the guy in Africa giving guns to kids? Co- Co- Tony, Tony, what's his name? Anyway, uh, I would encourage you, you are a municipality and you are not alone. If this nice gentleman from Overland Park, Kansas, will not sue the Kansas City government, there is a list of towns in the back of that information I gave you, of how they got around this issue. They made it similar to what, like, we tried with the sex offender ordinance in town. Can't live a certain mile, distance, feet, or whatever from a location. Kansas City passed one that said you can't have two stores within ten thousand feet of each other. How many feet or a mile? That would pretty much do it for us. And there's really nothing to argue with. There were arguments about, uh, traffic is a great one. Um, um, driveways causing impeding traffic, parking on the side of a street. We don't have to be overly creative and find out why this would be a bad idea, especially in a nice residential area. So, any questions for me? Okay, thanks, everybody.
Gail Repsloff. Brief comment. Sometimes there's things just worth going to court for, guys. And you just have to decide to bite the bullet. If a big corporation wants to sue Plainview, Nebraska, and really look like a bunch of jerks, I guess that's their business. But at some point in time, the big boys can't tell the little guys what's going on. And if it costs us money in litigation, it costs us money in litigation. So sometimes you just have to bite the bullet. Thank you.
And that's a former mayor speaking.
Uh, Tim Knack, I'll be, uh, brief as well, too. Um, and basically I'm here just to, you know, kinda support everyone. I don't have anything else really to add from what everyone else has said so eloquently. I think, you know, as I listen to all of this, the biggest question that I come up with, that I think you have to ask yourself as city council and mayor and whomever, is, is this going to improve Plainview? And I think the overwhelming response is no. And if it's no, I don't think there's any discussion to be had, to be honest.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask you a question? I understand that Massachia Bank is one that owns a property.
As far as I know, yes.
And so, if I had, if I had somebody come up to me and say, here's a hundred thousand dollars, probably I would take it because it's sitting there doing nothing right now. Does it have to be rezoned in order to go to housing?
Yes.
Is that possible to do?
Yes.
Can we do that before the Dollar Tree, Dollar General comes in here?
If somebody has a hundred thousand dollars to buy a lot, I suppose.
You know who owns it, Kareen, you know who to put the pressure on. I already tried.
I just, I just understand why if they had an opportunity to sell it, I'm not holding until you get them.
That item is in my notes, and depending on how things go, it may come to discussion.
Kareen's behind it, okay.
Susan Norris, economic development, not just for Plainview, but for Pierce County, Nebraska as well. Um, I submitted the report to you guys back in March, really specific to Plainview. Um, social media, we've blown it up over the weekend, lots of comments, lots of views, no comments. Um, nothing has really changed since March. I mean, my job as economic development is to bring what is gonna add wealth and value to your community. Um, and in rural setting, that doesn't necessarily mean just businesses and jobs. It means community place making. Um, it means, uh, sense of place. Those activities that improve your quality of life and don't negate it in, in the name of economic development. Because economic development can be good and bad, just depends on how you approach it. So when we look at this in our town, if forty-eight percent of your residents are considered low to moderate income, which I know because our great applications of which, we've gotten almost two million dollars worth in three years, is because we're poor. It's been good for us. Uh, forty percent of the students at Plainview Public Schools are in the free and reduced lunch program. Those are just the students that get tracked, not all the ones that are eligible. Twenty-four percent of our population is senior citizen. Nearly seventy percent of your population falls into the socioeconomic category that these Dollar Stores prey on. Cheap Chinese-produced foods, cheap soda, cheap processed items, things for a buck. This argument for us, for me and my office is not about consumerism, it is not about capitalism, it's not about competition. This is about not creating a food desert for the rest of this community. Because I personally don't wanna drive sixteen to thirty-five miles to get fresh food. That's just not something that's attractive to me. And as an economic developer in Pierce County, I'm already in that situation in Pierce. Now, Pierce is just ten, twelve minutes from Norfolk. So you wouldn't think that that would be a huge inconvenience for those people there that lost their grocery store when Dollar General went out. But it is, in a lot of other ways. When we surveyed the community, their number one priority was, get a grocery store in here. You know what we can't do? We can't get a grocery store in there because they can't compete with Dollar General. Affiliated Foods left, that co-op left, and the new one that came in has been very difficult for our local grocery stores to compete, to deal with, and Jan can tell you that. So getting someone new into the market is not going to work. Um, we're, I have twenty-seven people on a committee trying to solve that issue of a food desert in Pierce. Pierce on net taxable sales has lost, when the first grocery store went out, they lost a hundred thousand dollars that year. The second year they lost sixty-two thousand. The third year they lost forty-three thousand dollars. Yes, we've tried to buy a local campaign, yes, people saw how hard of a hit Main Street took when that grocery store went out. Because your grocery store is your barometer of your downtown. It brings the people to the downtown, so when they're there, what are they doing? Go to the local hardware store, go to the gas station, grab something to eat, go visit their insurance agent? If they're all going to Norfolk to do all those things, you can see that in black and white on net taxable sales in Pierce. I don't wanna have to deal with that issue here. The other thing about Pierce that we ran into is you can't get growth and development to happen there. We had land that we were going to give to a developer from Norfolk and Columbus. Here's free land, build some houses. They said, no thanks, you have no grocery store, no one will live here. It's a problem. Plainview is far enough away from Norfolk to be self-sustaining. Don't lose that. You have everything in this town that you need to live here comfortably. You have your healthcare, you have your school, you have post office, you have newspaper, you have all these things. Why would you wanna sell that out to an outside entity that doesn't care about your town? They're gonna, your land, you're a land investment. They're gonna buy that land, they're gonna put up that building, two, three years from now, they're gonna sell it to some other investment corporation. Because that's what Colby Capital is. So you have another outside entity that's owning that land. They don't care if Family Dollar burns out, they don't care if your grocery store leaves, they don't care if the pharmacy dries up. And if Dollar General doesn't survive, they don't care about that either. It is about the land and retail investment. And now you'll have two outside entities owning two seven to ten thousand square foot buildings in your town, and you have no grocery store, no hope of getting another one in here, and a pharmacy. And as a city, talking about the pharmacy, I would be very scared to lose that if I were you. The city owns the manor. Who provides the drugs and, and goes over the drug plans for the pharmacy every month? Who does the CHI Health Clinic rely on if you go in there for an appointment and you need antibiotics, or some other medication? So if your health clinic's dependent on it, your manor's dependent on it, and I don't think I need to remind you that we have six hundred and five thousand dollars worth of revolving loan funds through USDA that we put into the pharmacy, some of that, to make that deal happen, to bring Ashley here. You're on the hook if she goes out of business. The city will be paying that loan off. That's the deal we make, when we sign that contract, for every loan that we do. It is in your best interest to keep the manor going, the clinic going, the pharmacy going, so you're not on the hook with the USDA, at the bare minimum. I cannot see any advantage that Dollar General's gonna bring here. They're gonna employ ten people, if they can get it, most of them operate on three, at ten fifty an hour, and they only hire over twenty-one. I looked at what we got out of Family Dollar. You know what we got in property taxes out of that building last year? Four thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars. You know what we got in sales tax off of them? Less than twenty thousand dollars. Why? Grocery sales aren't taxed. They're not gonna be a big economic boom for you. There's no advantage. If you look at the fresh food ordinance that was passed, it was not about competition, and it was not about consumerism or capitalism. It was about preserving the access to fresh food and full-service pharmacies in this town, because we want to continue to be self-sustaining. The ordinance says that they can, they just have to be a mile from the nearest box store. Their first site that they looked at was right next to Farmer's Pride. Perfect. They're outside of town in every other town. They're on the outskirts of Creighton, they're on the outskirts of Neely, the new one in Norfolk is on the outskirts of Norfolk. In Bloomfield, they're just on the edge of town. Why do they have to be inside the, the city limits? Why is it so important? If it works for every town, why can't it work for us? And also in our research and all the things that have gone on over the weekend, small towns have fought back, small towns have won. And you can too. We've been sued for stupider things. There's a reason we have insurance, this is an opportunity to use it, because this might sound like a good thing today to avoid litigation, but what's Plainview look like ten years from now? I live in that world. What does this town look like ten years from now? Your population is up, the county is up, more kids in the school than we had in recent years. You have twenty-three new business owners in your downtown. You have housing going up, you have grants coming in. Is all of that worth this?
So, Mr. Mayor, can I ask, why are we talking about this tonight?
Good question.
Well, who put it on agenda? Why, why does it have to be voted on again?
Do you also wanna know why Biden pulled out of Afghanistan?
Well, it's about, about feels like the same thing. We're just doing a good job here.
I told you about the why earlier. It's on the agenda because talking about it once more avoided getting sued three weeks ago.
Well, that's what we're talking about.
And we thought that the conversa- conversation was going to be, uh, maybe nothing else would need to be done if further discussion could be had. Now we find the opposing council has not even attended this meeting, and has filed this beginning of a lawsuit. And that's where it stands.
I couldn't miss all that.
So, we can leave here
Well, thank you.
with no further action on any of these topics. We could leave here with amend the ordinance, or we can leave here with any other instructions the council gives us.
So let me understand, it's no one has personally from Dollar General Store contacted any of our council members or mayor? Or you personally?
The Dollar Store
You've only gotten emails.
The Dollar Store lawyers were on a conference call with Mark and I, and they asked that the mayor attend the conference call.
So you have talked, talked to the attorney?
And he did, so we've talked to the lawyers.
To the lawyers, okay.
Well, I have a question. Was it the lawyer for Colby Capital? Because that represents the guy who builds the Dollar Stores. And if you go to Colby Capital's website right now, there are Dollar General buildings for sale. He's just the investment guy.
Well, that's generally speaking, probably.
Dollar General was on the phone too.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they had, they had Dollar General people on the phone also. So they've made some effort, but that's not the question here tonight. And you have another candidate here.
I'm Janice Warnke, and I'm old, so I'll represent the elderly population. There'll be some point probably where I'll have my driver's license restricted where I can't drive out of town. So then that means I can't get groceries if we lose our grocery store. So I just want you to think about that. I love having these stores in town where, where we elderly people can have access to them.
And these box stores don't deliver. They don't deliver groceries, they don't deliver medicines to the hospital in the elderly.
Is there any other comments from the public?
I'm Pastor Alan Gager from the Methodist Church. The question I have for you is, are you discussing this tonight because you're afraid of litigation? What are you afraid of most? I mean, if you've talked about it in the past, and you have all these people saying no, why are you talking about it again? Don't let fear of a lawsuit betray you one way or the other. It's just a threat right now. Uh, if it comes to fruition, I think we have plenty of assets that we can make them a laughing pool. Uh, we have contacts probably with news stations, at least the newspaper does. Uh, I mean, if they want to sue, the city let them, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not everybody's saying no, though. Or somebody should get up and say yes?
Well, yeah.
Why don't we get up and say so?
I'm Michelle, I'm from Mrs. Food Center, and I just wanna touch on, like, just, what is it gonna do to our town? Like, everybody else said, we try to deliver, we hire local people, we hire the sixteen-year-old kids that need a job after school. I mean, we try, and I know Ashley hires local people that she can, there's other people in the community. She's been in business for twenty-six years. We're locally owned businesses, and I think you guys need to back us up. We don't need more corporations.
Thank you. Any last call for public comment?
Well, I'd just like to add that not having owned a business, I don't think any of you have, Bob sort of you have, kind of, coming along.
True.
You've not had to worry about your employees. And that's a big concern, because not only do you have to pay your utilities and your bills, you're gonna have to worry about that person, how they're gonna be feeling, if you have to say, I'm sorry, I cannot afford you. That's not a fun situation to be in. I know sometimes we have conversations, it's hard to get people to work, and that's true. So when you do get somebody to work, you don't wanna have to say, I have to let you go because I can't afford you. So just from, an aspect from having employees, just need to consider that.
Thank you.
Now remember, before you take any further action, we can do an executive session if you wanna talk further about the detail.
Yeah.
But the lawyers don't get to make the motions.
No, I was just reading again. So, I go back to letter A, executive session to discuss litigation risk and potential outcomes relative to challenges to small box store ordinance.
Could I add one more question?
Yeah.
Why are we always only targeted by Dollar Stores? Why can't we get, you know, a business that we don't already have in town? Like, say an Ace, you know, something, why, I just don't get.
Okay, so, I keep hearing hardware store a lot, and we've been working with someone for over a year on getting a hardware store.
I get anything.
Yes, and it, but here's the thing, to be an Ace Hardware is a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar franchise fee. To be a true value hardware store, it's franchise fee about the same, and you haven't bought any inventory yet, you just bought the fee.
Right.
Really difficult to get a bank in a small town to support business, because if you've got a quarter of ground, they're, they're your best bud.
Right.
But if you've got a business venture, they're like, okay?
You've got a quarter of ground.
Correct. So, the hardware store we had So, the hardware store we had, that was a year-long process to get that up and going, and unfortunately it burned down in six months.
Right.
We are working on it.
I just, I think it's weird that we're
You have to find the supplier line.
Like we're targeted by these dollar stores almost, like we're just
Because they're targeting your low socioeconomic status.
They've got poor people.
That's right, that's what they're targeting.
But it, but see, we're
It's not a compliment.
Most self-employed people, you know, they're only paying taxes on, you know, what they have to, you know what I mean? That's why a lot of people are in the food program, AKA farm kids, you know what I mean? There's more money made, they just, you know.
But what these businesses are looking at, they're looking at the black numbers, the numbers that are tracked, right? So they're like, hmm, here's a big hole, let's go there.
But they're thinking we're just a bunch of dumb rednecks and they're trying to take that back.
Correct, to some degree. But yes, there are, are we trying to try to
Yeah, we're not here, folks, we're not here for a discussion that could be had in your living room.
If we go into executive session, we'll move into the library and you guys can stay here talking about the hardware store, how about that?
I'm willing.
Okay, so you have a motion to go in executive session?
It's their business model.
Pardon?
Low socioeconomic. Whether they're in a, in a big city, they're
It's apparently up to you, I guess you can see what happens to the town.
Can we drive? Which is why they're in Oklahoma.
Pardon me, the, the inference is clearly for purposes of discussion of litigation is what's up. The weather looks like they'd like to stay. Would it be easier if we just take the meeting in the other room for a moment?
We're here.
I know, I was just waiting for you.
Courtney's not here. She'll be right back.
Let her be anxious, she's got to write something down. Like for her to be She doesn't trust me to write. It's dangerous that way.
Nice job, Courtney.
Okay. Nine oh six PM, uh, the Plainview, Nebraska City Council is back in regular session from the executive session to discuss litigation risk and potential outcomes relative to challenges to small box store ordinance. Letter B, discussion slash action, full repeal or amendment to ordinance number nine six four relative to small box discount stores.
I'll make a motion to repeal ordinance nine six four.
Second. Any further discussion? Voting, Brian?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Nay.
Bob?
Nay.
Myself, nay, motion fails three to two.
I make a motion to, uh, amendment to ordinance nine six four relative to small box discount stores.
I'll second that motion.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero on first reading. Did you read the amendment for us? What was that? Sure. Okay.
I don't think you want to read the whole thing.
No, I was just going to read the sentence. Bruce, I lost time, don't worry, it's no big deal to have this one. I'll read, we're all good.
If you'd only taken three minutes earlier, we'd have time.
Okay, no, here's a sentence, here's what changed, okay. Okay. If located under five thousand, two hundred and eighty feet from another such store, this use is allowed by special use permit only. In addition to the criteria for a special use permit set forth in the zoning code, when reviewing a request for special use permit for a discount store use, the planning commission and city council shall consider, and then there's four items, so if the applicant applies for a permit, it would have to go through the zone, similar to the trans, kind of the zoning permit, or zoning board will have a public hearing, and then the city council would have a public hearing. Refresh my memory, is special use like a variance or not? Do we decide the council serves as the zoning board and there's a variance?
It's rather like a variance, but it's a special use permit.
The council can do that, the county doesn't get to see it?
This is not a county thing, no. But I, to explain a bit, just to interpret the language we had there, the ordinance as it stands says they could only get a special use permit if they were outside or at least five thousand, two hundred and eighty feet from another store. So they could only get a special use permit outside the city limits, but still somewhere in the Plainview zoning jurisdiction, out west of John Deere or out toward John Deere. This now will say, now does say, they passed it on first reading only. Now says they can apply for a special use permit within the city limits, and it will be reviewed, but as a special use permit, it could still be approved or turned down.
What's the condition for a special use permit in this case? They have to meet all the
The rules are long and complicated, they're not something
The only thing I did is took out the word at the ordinance.
So the last, this part, so they still have to provide all the things that was
And then, especially use permits, exactly what we have for TC Energy, so it'll run the same way, it'll both be zoning, it'll come here, you're going to do your spiel again in front of it if they still choose to operate it.
Okay, so it passed on the first reading. This is a mile from current store?
Second, third reading.
Yeah.
So it has to be if they, if they choose to build
They have to
They have to apply for a permit first. It has to be a mile away from the, in a store.
No.
No.
No, not now. No, it was, now it's not.
Right.
If this passes.
If it passes on second and third reading.
Yes.
Wait, so how is that better?
So if, if they're under the mile, they have to apply for a special use permit if they want to build within the city limits.
Right.
Maybe you should tell them what the conditions are with that, those three. No. Brooke, do you want to hear what the conditions were for special use permit?
Yeah.
Okay.
Whether the proposed discount store may have a detrimental impact on the development of grocery stores and other businesses that sell fresh and healthy food items in the area to be served by the proposed area. Two, the availability of healthy food options in the area of the proposed use, including the proximity of full-service grocery stores within one mile of the proposed use and effect of the use on the retail food environment index as designed, as defined by the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention. Three, whether the proposed use is within an area that may become a food desert as defined